Let's call our meeting to order. The Board of County Commissioners, everybody take their seats, please. This is Tuesday, June 27th. Our invocation this morning is going to be led by the Honorable Terrell Hill and our Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Lible. If you would all stand, please.
Let us bow our heads. Dear Father Lord, we come before you right now, asking that your wisdom and your power and your blessings be bestowed upon us at this time. Lord, we ask that you allow the decisions to be made according to your will. Lord, we ask that everyone treat one another with the neighborly love and respect that we all deserve. Lord, we ask that you guide this community, Lord, and that you fill us with unity, Lord, and that you fill us with your grace and your love. These are our blessings, we ask in your darling son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Hill, and thank you, Commissioner Lible. First order of business today is the approval of the minutes of June 13th, 2017. The Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. There's going to be a little point of privilege I'm going to take today. I do see Representative Bobby Payne in the room. Representative Payne, welcome this morning. Thank you very much for being here. There's a lot of people here. Would like to take a moment, where's Shannon Burge at? Shannon? Okay. Somebody go grab Shannon for me. Okay? She did not want to come in, but we're going to make her come in.
It may take law enforcement.
Okay? Mr. Woods, would you go grab Shannon from next door, please? I told her I was going to get a policeman to escort her in here if I needed. All right. In the meantime, we'll go ahead and do our proclam-- well, we're waiting on someone for that too, aren't we? Okay? I'd like to go ahead and call up Dana and Brian with the Chamber of Commerce, please, and we'll get that one out of the way, then we'll go back and follow into our agenda. Dana and Brian are going to bring, as you read in the paper, have some great news, and we're going to talk about-- just give us kind of a quick overview for the listening audience and our people in the room.
Sure. For those of you who missed it in the media this weekend, Project Purple actually came out into the light on Friday with the President and CEO of Georgia Pacific coming down to make the announcement that they're spending $400 million in the Georgia Pacific plant here in Palatka. We were the ones chosen for the investment. It will not only create that investment, but 80 jobs are coming along with the new technology, about 700 construction jobs over the course of two years, and of course, all the ancillary jobs that come along with that in retail and such will create about another 200 to 250 jobs in the community as well. So, we're very, very excited. It locks in the future of our plant, and it was a lot of work, but thank you, Commissioners, for all your patience and work and the staff here at the county as well.
Thank you for everything you've done, and we appreciate it. So, we thank you very much, and our county thanks you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you again. I am dead, is what Shannon is referring to me. Shannon, please come up to the podium, please, and meet Commissioner Chip Lible there. See, I'm not going to get close to you right now.
No speech.
Commissioner Lible, would you please do the honors for us?
Okay. Presented to Shannon Burge, for over 35 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Putnam County, I, on behalf of my Board of County Commissioners, staff, and everybody you've touched in 35 years, thank you for your service.
Everyone, you're welcome.
We're going to miss this girl.
Shannon. Okay. You want to do that? Don't let it hear you, Karen. Is it bad? Shannon started when she was, what, 17, working for the county almost?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Been here a long time.
How many duties?
Lots.
You saw evolution, didn't you?
I did, really.
I know.
Lot of changes.
Yeah.
It's been good. I'm very appreciative. God's good.
That's right. And for those of you who don't know, all the MSBUs in the counties of the multiple-service benefit unit on the parade and paving the road, Shannon was cut a teeth off. She was the one who started that. And I tell you, it was a blessing, and it is a blessing for this county, and we're going to miss you severely, okay?
I'm going to miss the people who brought the work.
All right, I'll pay for that later, but that's okay. I don't mind doing that.
You are the best.
I know that. I get that. That's okay. All right, proclamation. Commissioner Pickens, if you'll make your way down to the podium, and Marcia, if you'll come up, keep Putnam beautiful. Commissioner Pickens will do the honors of reading the proclamation.
Thank you, Chairman Harvey. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation for Keep Putnam Beautiful, celebrates its volunteers. Proclamation number 2017-44. Whereas Putnam County has a pristine rural environment, and whereas our environment is important to our residents and our visitors, and to the economic viability and development of our county, and whereas Keep Putnam Beautiful volunteers have gone above and beyond the norm in giving of their time, talents, and continued effort to keep Putnam beautiful, and whereas all Keep Putnam Beautiful volunteers go the extra mile to keep the community free of litter year-round by volunteering 4,211 hours, which translates to a volunteer dollar value of $89,643. And whereas through Adopt a Byway, Adopt a Shore, St. John's Cemetery, and Putnam Pride, these volunteers have served to motivate others to become custodians of our environment by leading through example, and whereas Keep Putnam Beautiful relies heavily upon our volunteers to help keep our roads, waterways, communities clear of litter, and greatly appreciate all of their efforts. And whereas Keep Putnam Beautiful recognizes that several of our volunteers have gone the extra mile by dedicating their time and materials to regularly clean their part of our community. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners would like to partner with Keep Putnam Beautiful Board of Directors in having several of our volunteers with the Golden Trash Can Award for undying diligence and pride in keeping our county free of litter. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners does hereby support continued efforts of volunteers of Keep Putnam Beautiful and thank them for all they do for Putnam County, done, ordered, and adopted this 27th day of June, 2017. I would like to write the recommendation that we accept this proclamation.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Pickens.
Second.
Proper second by Commissioner Lible. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marcia. And I don't know what I have to do, but I want to talk to you after the meeting or get in touch with me, because I want one of those trashcans.
Oh, okay.
You might want to wait to see who gets it and how worn out they are before you--
We can certainly arrange that. We just like to thank the county commission for all their years of support. Keep Putnam Beautiful is actually celebrating its 26th year, for those of you who don't know about us, and we're one of the oldest affiliates in the state of Florida, so we were really a leader in the state for making this happen. Not only do we do our cleanups, but we do beautification as well, and many of our volunteers have not only done cleanups, but have worked on our beautification projects. And I know, as you've all read, we also have community gardens, which are really going great, and thank you, Lord, for the rain, because it has really helped out. We do have a couple of our board members here, which I would like to recognize, because without their leadership, we could not do what we do. We have Wayne Knuckles here, who's President of our board, and Yvonne Parrish, who is Vice President, and Daniel Carl, who's somewhere here, he's on our board. I don't know if we have any others, but we just wanted to say thank you in some small way for their contribution in helping us keep Putnam County clean and beautiful. So, these awards reflect not only the cleanups, but also our recycling efforts, which our electronics recycle project was a huge success. We were able to give computers to some of our students, and again, we can't thank our volunteers enough. So, I'm going to read off the names, and Mr. Knuckles will hand them the golden trashcan, and of all of you who want to aspire to get one, you can come see me, and we'll tell you how you can do it. Yeah, and for those of you, please remain up here to do it. I'd like to do the City of Palatka. The City of Palatka came up with Palatka Pride, and we want to thank them, and Mayor Hill, and I know Terry Suggs is here too, for their leadership. They just don't talk the talk, they walk it. They're out there with the grabbers and the gloves and the shovels, and they do attend our cleanups, and so we want to thank the mayor and the people at the city for all their assistance. So, if they can come up--
(applause)
Now, with Palatka Pride, we also have the Police Department and the Fire Department, and I wanted to throw out a thank you to Captain Matt Newcomb, who does all the scheduling, Chief Shaw, Chief Lambert from the Fire Department. When you see a Palatka Pride cleanup, let me tell you, these guys are out there en masse. We also want to thank Ed Chandler over at Sanitation. When we need a clamshell, he's there with it. So, we want to thank Ed for all of his assistance. But again, the city has really come out and forced with this, and we can't thank them enough for all that they do. The next one is Mary Garcia. I don't know if she's here with the Health Department. Are you here, Mary? Mary! Yay! Talk about an entree. Mary with the Health Department, not only do they do cleanups, but they've also adopted a road, and they do one of our community gardens, and they are out there all the time as well, so we can't thank them enough. Daniel Carl and Waste Pro. Let me tell you, if it wasn't for Waste Pro, our Clean It Up, Green It Up wouldn't happen. So, we want to thank Daniel and Waste Pro. And speaking of Clean It Up, Green It Up, our county commission, they were all there picking up stuff along with everybody else, so thank you, Commissioners, for helping us with the Clean It Up, Green It Up. We also want to have Ken and Janice Mahaffey. Let me tell you, I get more calls about the two people who are walking up 17 and East Palatka, picking up trash, and they are incredible, so we want to thank Ken and Janice for all their help. I'm looking to see who's here in the audience. Timothy Kaiser. Tim was wonderful in helping us with our recycle program, our electronics recycle. He was always there when we needed him, and he was great. I'm going to call them Mr. and Mrs. Melrose, because when I need anything at Melrose, Tim and Melanie Parker, they are there, so thank you, Tim and Melanie, for helping us in Melrose. I like to call this lady the Queen of Recycling. Annie, are you here? When-- When there is any kind of a public thing, Annie is out there recycling. In fact, she actually took recycling bags that had regular trash, dumped them all out, and separated it, and re-bagged everything so that it was good. She is absolutely amazing for recycling. You know, it's just regular people that make this happen, and George and Kay Portof-- Portof, they are our champions in Satsuma. They clean up Buffalo Bluff Road all by themselves on a regular basis, and we can't thank them enough for what they do out there in Satsuma. Let me tell you something. Anytime I do anything, Larry is probably the second person, I first email the mayor, then I email Larry, because if you want something to happen, it happens. So, I'll say, "I want to do a cleanup." "Oh, let's do it countywide." "Oh, let's get 500 volunteers." And I'm going, "What are you guys, nuts? Oh, no, we can do it, and we'll have a band, and we'll..." Well, anyway, that enthusiasm spills over, and I can't thank--
You called Larry, didn't you?
Yes. I can't thank Larry enough, because not only in general, but he leads the charge out in Interlochen and the western part of Putnam. So, Larry, we want to thank you for all that you do for us. There's three more people, and-- I just want to say their names, and we'll get these to them. Rufus, Commissioner Rufus Borum, he was so instrumental in us doing our electronic recycling. He was there all the time, he helped me with the computers, and we can't thank him enough. An unsung hero is Danny Sheffield, and he just will not show up. If I could kidnap him, I would. But St. Joseph Cemetery is something that was given to us to work on, and Danny and his friends and family are out there all the time, helping us take care of that cemetery. He's such an unsung hero, and we can't thank him enough. So, this is for Danny. And then, I don't know if Cindy is here?
Yeah.
Get up here, Cindy. Bring the kid. Let me tell you, if organizations could have 10 Cindys, you would not believe the work that can get done. Not only does she help with the cleanups, not only does she do the rotary cleanups, her family has adopted a street. She's there for our fundraising. She, the Clean It Up, Green It Up, she's got a picture of me going, because I was going crazy, and if it wasn't for Cindy to help me, we couldn't get it done. So, thank you, Cindy, for all that you do. So, again, we just want to thank everybody. We certainly want to thank the commission, because again, without your support, we don't make this happen, and please thank all of our volunteers. Thank you. Thank you, Janice.
Thank you so much, that was wonderful. Our next item on the agenda is Sheriff Deloche. Would you please come up? You have a presentation you'd like to make.
Mr. Chairman, fellow members of the board and citizens, it's my distinct pleasure to let you all know today that we have a hero in the room among us. This young man is 11 years old and exhibited an extreme amount of bravery. Mr. Hassel Skeens, would you please come up with your father? And while you're coming up, Colonel Wells, if you'd read the recommendation.
Yes, sir. On May 23rd, 2017, 11-year-old Hassel Skeens saw smoke down the road from his residence and had the clarity of mind to not only report the fire, but to warn nearby residents of the danger. Mr. Skeens warned the occupants of the Boswick Park Drive residence, who were unaware of the fire. His timely discovery of the smoke, coupled with his quick actions to report the fire and notify the closest residents to the fire, likely saved lives. His quick actions, like I said, likely saved lives of the two residents who were sleeping inside the residence, who were sleeping inside the home at the time of the fire. There is little doubt that Mr. Skeens' quick thinking and actions prevented substantial property damage and possibly saved the lives of two Putnam County residents.
And on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we'd like to give you a county pen for all you've done, okay?
It's my distinct pleasure today to present Hassel with a certificate recognizing him for outstanding citizenship here in Putnam County.
You can be the honorary chairman for one of the-- Go ahead and bang the gavel, you want it. It's not that much fun. All right, good, thank you.
We've got to go now, we've got work to do.
Me too, Tony, me.
Okay, we'll come back down. We've got to get one more picture taken. Come on. Don't get used to this seat, I like it up here. All right. Moving right along, I'd like to-- our next item is Mr. Craig Coffey, County Administrator, Flagler County Administrator's search update. I know you don't have this kind of fun in Flagler County--
Oh, I'm jealous. You guys have a lot of fun.
I know, right?
Have a lot of fun. Great acts to follow.
You don't have the golden trashcan either.
No, we do not. But we may have to steal that idea and bring it back to us. That's a pretty good idea. Just wanted to update you on what's going on. Now, we've received 48 applicants for your county administrator position. We're in the process of trying to work with the committee that you've appointed, down to narrow that down to eight. We've set up some dates in the process, and we met this morning, and it was a very good start to the process, and we look forward to taking it from there. But once we narrow it down to eight, we'll then do all the background checks and stuff like that, get more detail, and then eventually bring that back to you, to ask you to select four for interviewing sometime in July.
Good deal.
We've thrown out some dates and stuff for you. Hopefully, July 21st, I think we set as the date. That's good for you guys? And also, I have August 10th and 11th for the interview process. So, and final selection on the 15th, I've been told, you guys want that. Is that all correct?
So far, so good, yeah.
All right. All of you have my contact information, should you have a question along the way, we'll start sending you more and more information as we go along, and should you have a question about anything you see, or want us to do anything else, let us know.
Good. Thank you so much, and we appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
You had to get up early to get here this morning by eight, didn't you?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coffey, for all you're doing for Putnam County, and we greatly appreciate it. Ms. Leota Wilkinson, I saw Representative Payne here. Is he still here? Okay. When he comes in, if he'd like to say a few words, we can make that happen for him, okay? Next thing on the agenda, I want to touch real briefly before we go. Mr. Jim Toriano with St. John's River Water Management District, he's our new legislative liaison, if I'm doing that correctly, intergovernmental coordinator. And he just wants to introduce himself. He took Susan Davis's place?
That's correct, sir.
And so, we welcome you here today.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and Commissioners, and staff. My name is Jim Toriano, and I am the new intergovernmental coordinator for the St. John's River Water Management District, and I've been in this position just for a few weeks. My areas of responsibility are Alachua, Putnam, Marion, and Flagler Counties, and to include the municipalities therein. It's been a great opportunity, learning a lot about water. We've had a great meeting with the Chair recently, myself and the Executive Director, and so, I wanted just to say briefly about a few projects that we're very proud of. Putnam County is going to be the, or is the awardee of $2 million in a great program to this county. And I'll be coming back in the near future to make that presentation to you, but I really must thank you on behalf of the Executive Director and our governing board for this commission to come to our governing board meeting. It truly showed your leadership and your vision, being in the audience, as well as our other members that we had as applicants, truly sent a message to our governing board, and it truly showed your commitment. So, we thank you, and on behalf of our Executive Director and our governing board, we appreciate you being there for us. I also wanted to talk about another program that we have. We have $1.5 million that's available for farmers, and so, I have emailed that information out, and if any farmers are interested in cost share for water savings, please contact me, and you can go to our website, I'd be glad to provide that information to you. That's good money to help us overall solve our problems of keeping our water as good as it can be. And I just want to say, not only did Putnam County receive $2 million, but the City of Palatka, $1.1 million, and through a public-private partnership with Tater Farms, an additional $74,000. It's a lot of money coming back to this community to help with water. So, congratulations to staff and all elected officials who helped get to that point, and we really appreciate the partnership. And if there's anything that we could do for you, please say, and I'd be glad to make that happen. And if there's anything I can take back to our governing board or to the Executive Director, please let me know, and I'd be glad to do so.
We will. Thank you so much--
Thank you very much.
Welcome, too.
Congratulations again.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Next on the agenda, Ms. Linda Myers. There she is, over there. Okay. And she's going to talk to us about the update on the tax certificate sale. Is that this paper we have in front of us?
That is. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Tim Smith, and staff, and everybody that's here with us today. Those of you who read the agenda might be here just to find out about the tax certificate sale. No? Lots of good information, you are. So, Mr. Chairman, if you'll recall, we had a workshop with you guys maybe a month ago, five or six weeks ago, just to make sure that you had all your questions answered when this packet came out in the newspaper. I don't know if the newspaper is still here, but they do a great job in printing this. I knew you would be having questions on this, so I wanted to make sure you knew some of the information ahead of time. And at that point in time, there was the question to me, "Well, could you come back and talk to us afterwards?" I thought this forum would be better than the workshop, because we have an opportunity to share with our citizens who have a concern about this, when they see this come out. So, before I start, I do want to introduce two folks that are with me. They are with the Tax Administration Department. Nicole Buckles is our tax specialist, and Chris Pogue is with the Tax Administration Office. These are the faces that when you come into our office to do tax work, you will work with. They are talented folks, and we're glad to have both of them with us. Thank you. What I passed out to you all, I have a few extra copies. Nicole, do you have them? If somebody in the audience, we printed about five or six extra copies. It's kind of a wrap-up of the tax certificate sale, so if you would like a copy, please raise your hand, and we'll get one to you. Oh, Tony would like one. I didn't give you one, Tony, did I? Right there. Thank you. So, when this comes out, I know you get questions, "Oh, my gosh, do these many people, do we not get the taxes from this many parcels?" So, I want-- So I wanted to make sure that you knew how the sale turned out, and also our citizens know, have some information they can share when they walk out of here. So in this advertisement, we're 21,923, I'm now referring to this side of the form. We advertised that many parcels. Your next line will show you, some of them did not go to sale, but we advertised them legally. Should they be able to go to sale, we would be ready to do that. In fact, 1,637 did not go to the sale. The main reason is redemption. The person who owns the property saw their name in the paper and called us and said, what'll it take for me to not have the certificate sale? So that many people either redeemed them themselves, and/or there's a few cases in here that were in bankruptcy, but the general preponderance of them are folks that came in and paid their taxes. So that left 20,286 that actually went to sale on June 1st. So as you recall, this is an auction, and it's a live auction online where bidders pay the taxes for the owner of the property. And they do this to earn interest, so it's kind of like a little loan, it's a lien on the property for the taxes they paid, and they earn interest. If you recall, they bid on the lowest interest is the winner. So that's to accommodate the property owner so that it's not at a level necessarily that could be foreboding. So the winner of the certificate is the person who bid on that property with the lowest interest rate. So you'll see interest rates vary tremendously, but of those 20,000 that went to sale, we sold, from this packet, we sold the taxes. Somebody paid the taxes on 85% of this by value. So 85% of these parcels by value, the value that's in the land, sold. And that brought in $4.9 million on June 1st. Now that doesn't go strictly to the B.O.C.C., that goes to all the taxing authorities. I don't know if the city is still here, they are not. That money will be distributed this week to all the taxing authorities. And so what that amounts to, to the B.O.C.C. General Fund, you actually get funds in other areas too, because the, some of it may be the garbage fee, and some of it may be an MSBU, but the preponderance of that money is to the General Fund, and you will be pocketing, not pocketing, putting in your bank account, sorry for that. Now, I don't want that quoted, but the newspapers are already gone, right? So I better look at this audience. It's going in their bank account, the B.O.C.C. bank account, on Friday, and it will be $2.14 million just to the General Fund. So I want you to walk away understanding, this is not folks who are not paying their taxes, well, they're not paying their taxes, but somebody is paying the taxes. So you are getting the taxes from 85% by value. I keep stressing value because that actually is only 7,000 certificates. Out of the 20,000 that went to sale, literally went to sale, were available for sale, 85% by value was sold, but that was only 7,000 parcels. The remaining 13,000 parcels that didn't sell, go to the county, they are now sitting in county-held certificates. But what's important for you to realize is that's 13,000 unsold parcels, but the value in the entire 13,000 parcels in tax is only eight, is only, it's a lot of money, but nothing like what we took in, 847,000. So if you think about those numbers, and a quick math will tell you that that's averaged $63 of taxes on every one of those properties. So we're not going to get certificate bidders to bid on that property because there's, they know they won't get the money back, because those properties have zero or very, very little value, in general, less than $3,000. In fact, it's quite a bit, it's hard to average that because it's city and county and all the MSBU's that are in that $63. It's all taxing authorities. But the value of that is minimal. And so the folks, when these don't sell, they go to the county and county-held certificates, which we spoke about, and in general, there is no value there. These are 25 by 75 lots that are not buildable. So, long time ago, folks stopped paying taxes on them because they can't even build on them, they're not useful in their current form, which is small, non-buildable lots, and a variety of other reasons, but that's one of the majors. But so the other side of the silver lining, in those 13,000 that did not sell, and roughly that's the same every year, last year, at the end of our tax certificate sale, to this year's tax certificate sale, an entire 12-month period, people, normally local bidders, go into the county-held online venue, and they actually purchased another 241,000 straight from the county-helds, because they actually go in one by one and look at these and look, because there's some in there with value that just got missed by the bidders in the online. So in the next year, last year, we took in another 241,000 of taxes through bidders paying, buying county-helds, and we will probably, that's kind of an average now that we're receiving, that goes to all the taxing authorities. So if you will recall, about three years ago, we, the Tax Collector Office, put county-held certificates online, available 24/7/360. So that really prompted sales of those county-helds where folks could come in and look for an investment, and that's what these are, investments. So I thought it'd be good to know that by value, 85%, and that's a pretty high number for statewide, so by value, those taxes were collected. So I think I covered everything, but if you have any questions, and on the backside, I just thought you might find that interesting, the backside is our top winners by value, the top one, and our top winners by parcel count. So you'll see, we have one investor, and I think this is good news, we have one investor that believes enough in the property values in this county that they invested themselves, 1.37 million. And then we have one investor, the next one, well, we have two over a half a million. So those are our top 10, and I think that's a positive sign that we have folks out there who see value here, and they're willing to pay those taxes so that the county gets the benefit of the taxes, and they feel comfortable that these owners will be paying them back. Now, of course, there's no guarantee on tax certificates, but these folks feel comfortable investing that kind of money in Putnam County, and I think that's a good sign.
I agree. Thank you.
Anything else?
Commissioners?
Just to thank you, this was very transparent and appreciated.
Well, and this is such a misunderstood area, so, and if anybody in the audience, or Commissioners or staff want to find out more about this, we are more than glad to go over these numbers or share the whole ideas. Some folks still don't quite grasp, this is not bringing this property to sale, this is merely paying the taxes and taking a lien, kind of like a mini loan, taking a lien on the property. It ultimately can lead to a tax deed sale, but that's about two years away and requires that the homeowner did not, or the vacant land, quite a bit of this is vacant land, in fact, did not pay that lender back, or that investor back. But thank you for the opportunity to share that information.
Thank you, thank you for all your hard work, we appreciate it. Alright, we're gonna go into our public comment portion of this meeting. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. It's not reasonable to expect that the Board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters, unless the Board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your time to three minutes, public comment cards, these blue cards are in the back on the wall. You don't need a public comment card to speak, but it is encouraged if you will. And our first speaker today has a presentation, very quick one, if you don't mind. Ms. Fay Sparkman, please come. Mr. Coffey still here? See, he gets to see more fun, he's not here. We're gonna time you.
Today we have something very special. Tim Smith, the best hugger, the best handshakeer of the county, has 10, guess what, women to honor in the Huggers Club.
Good deal.
And so if he wants to come forward, the first three people cannot be here, so the Sheriff is gonna come up after he reads their name and give him, them, you know, the things to take back.
So what's this about? This is the infirmed club today?
Yeah, you wanna go together?
Alright, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we'll try to make this quick. As you remember, this really kind of started out as some levity a couple of years ago, but what we have found, and what we know, is that what it shows is that good communications and fellowship always leads to better interactions and better results. So we hope that all of you will continue to take this in that vein, and that's what this is about. So I'm gonna read some names, we're gonna call them up, then I'll say a few words, and then we will move forward with the rest of the agenda thing.
Mr. Cooneyo, could you come move this table for us? Please, thank you.
Alright, Kim Daly.
Ms. Daly's not here today?
Right, these three are not here. And Tammy McEnvo.
These are the ones that are here.
Okay, so these folks are here, and then what we're gonna ask them to do, if they'll come, line up over here. And the first one is Tabitha Lassiter.
Alright, Tabitha Lassiter. You wanna talk, Tabitha? This part of sorority time, isn't it?
And Yvonne Parrish.
She's gotta take pictures, how can she?
You have to do a selfie.
Yeah.
A selfie, a groupie.
And Lisa Suarez. Lisa. Yes.
This is your special one, it goes with you.
Oh, well, Darlene Smith from the Supervisor of Elections Office.
I think you know her, don't you, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think you know her quite well, yeah.
Do you know I had to work on to get that one here? You give her a hug.
And Tony Weaver. Tony. This part of the minutes will have a blank in it. And then last but not least, Debbie Williamson.
The males are gonna feel excluded today, aren't they?
I get hugging.
Well, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Let me just make a couple of words about this, because these folks represent our offices to the public, and that's why we wanted to have this group come in, because these folks are the ones that get good comments about good customer service, they provide information to the public, and sometimes when they can't get to us, this is who they deal with. So we wanted to congratulate all of you, and thank you for the great work you do on behalf of all of our offices, and we thank you so much.
Please thank Ms. Carey for making the buttons and Sparky doing all the rest.
Absolutely. And we do want to thank Ms. Carey for putting the buttons together, and then we want to thank Sparky always, as he does, is getting the plaques and the certificates together, we want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Alright, good.
You wanna pick up there?
We can, come on up, we're fine.
Come on, Kim.
Good-looking bunch of Huggies today.
Don't be breaking any cameras.
Everybody ready? Pull the back for a mic. Alright, go forth and hug. Thank you, Fay, and thank you, Mr. Clerk, we appreciate that. Little bit of levity, and we have a good time doing it. Too bad Mr. Coffey's not here again to see how we have fun in Putnam County. Alright, is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time of public comment? That was the only blue card I had. If you will, please come up to the podium, give your name and phone number, and you will have three minutes to talk about your topic.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gary Milstead, I live at 113 Cal Creek Court in East Palatka. And I received a registered letter from the Putnam County Public Works Department telling me to come to this meeting because they're planning on vacating, maintaining my road.
Milstead, can we, can we address that, and we can pull that item when we talk about that, if you will?
Okay, that's fine, I didn't realize that it was coming up in a certain sequence.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we pull that, we'll pull that item, but for now, let's keep you, if you'll go back to your seat, we'll call you back up, okay?
Thank you very much.
Alright, Mr. Milstead, thank you, sir. Alright, is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak to this Board today? Alright, please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Tim Hoteling, 105 Riverside Drive, San Mateo.
Good morning, Mr. Hoteling.
Good morning. Just a quick little hope for y'all, next time you have an investor coming in, please, please, give it a number. Don't give it a Project Purple name.
Thank you. I would like Project Orange and Blue, but that's okay.
Go Gators.
It's working.
Yeah, go Gators. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak to us? Alright, seeing them, we're gonna close the public comment portion of our meeting. Commissioners, is there any agenda items you'd like to pull?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
G and I.
Alright, G and I, Mr. Goddard?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pickens?
No.
Okay, and I would like, since we're having G and I, I would like to discuss J also. So let's take him in the order, item number G, Information Technology, Mr. Lible, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, Bob, yes, and basically, I know there's gonna be, I mean, questions on the communications from staff, and are we replacing our Nortels, is that the deal?
That's exactly what we're doing.
The only thing I couldn't find is why.
Couple of good reasons. Our current maintenance, our current phone system runs about $47,000 a year. With the new phone system, we will drop that to about $10,000 a year. Our current handsets that y'all have on your desks fail at an alarming rate, we replace about 10 of them a week. We, as fast as they fail, we're repairing them, but it's an ongoing battle to keep up. It's time for us to move forward, this new system is all IP-based, it's gonna give us the capability for our cellphones to be part of the phone system. Integration into the Link system, the little communicator thing we have, you can quickly switch from communicating via text to, you click on the little phone button and you can call and talk to someone. It's just a state-of-the-art, new system. We're gonna lease it, we're gonna do the five-year lease, it's a little bit more than what we're currently paying in maintenance for the five-year lease. So it kind of sort of pays for itself in a way, and it brings us forward. The current system is very old, it's obsolete, that's why maintenance is so high on it.
So I saw the dollar buyout at the end of the lease, do you think the equipment will be usable and serviceable?
Yes, yes, we're looking at 20, 10-plus years on it.
Good. So all my questions, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Lible, appreciate it. Any other questions?
Good.
Alright, we're gonna move to item number I, and Public Works, Mr. Press Tompkins, if you'll come up. Mr. Milstead, if you'll get on deck, and as soon as he presents it to us, you can come up and speak to us, sir. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Tompkins.
Good morning, Press Tompkins, Public Works Director. This was an item that we had discussed at our Transportation Committee meeting.
You're gonna have to fix that a little bit, there you go.
Okay, I'm sorry. We discussed this at our Transportation Committee meeting. This is a cul-de-sac-type dead-end road that we basically inherited through some maintenance that we had done years ago. It's a 30-foot easement, it was not dedicated to the county, it was not owned by the county, but since we had done maintenance on it, Mr. Manning suggested that we go- suggested that we go through the formal vacation process, not providing maintenance. We have not been able to maintain this road for years. It's a 30-foot easement. The residents have planted shrubs, put obstacles all in the right of way to prevent us from going in there. The first seven or eight property owners got together, and they actually paved their own road through there. There's three residents at the end of the road that did not participate in that, and there's actually no way I can send a motor grader in there to grade approximately 200 to 300 feet of road. It is just not economically viable for us to do that. That's why we brought it to the Transportation Committee, and we're bringing it to you now to recommend vacation of this, turning it formally to the homeowners. They've been maintaining it for what we could do, we could not get in there to maintain any of it now. So, our recommendation is, from Public Works, is to vacate this section of easement back to homeowners as it was originally sated out to be, and go forward from there.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins, if you'll. Mr. Milstead, you had a comment that you'd like to make concerning this.
Just thank you, and I've got some photographs here and a incident report that I'd like to submit for your consideration to help you make this determination.
If you'll give it to the Clerk of the Court, she'll take care of it from there.
Well, the situation is, this road has been maintained almost for 20 years, and it is true that the property does not belong to the county. In addition to this road being maintained, there's two other roads that are close to it. One directly on the other side of the canal from this road, which is Canal Drive, and then one street up, there's John's Place. All three of these roads are pretty similar in scope of work and what needs to be done. My understanding in my brief conversation with the new director, Mr. Press, I guess his name is, is that it's too expensive to take and drive three lots over and come down my road to do the last 210 feet of road with the road grader. There's a couple of issues involved here. One of the issues, of course, is the obstructions that he references. Unfortunately, the obstructions have been placed there out of a conflict that I've had with my neighbors where they've been basically harassing and stalking us by driving off the road, and it got to the point where the neighbor's car with the wife driving ran into my wife. Now, there's police while she was off the road, left the road to run into my wife. That's when I put the curbing along the side of the road to prevent that happening again. So, from my perspective, the obstacles have all been justified, because the most important thing to me is the safety of my family. Now, as far as being able to maintain the road, all we've really needed is for some potholes to be filled and tamped, compacted. It is true that the road was partially paved. That was something that was brokered by the former Public Works Director. The reason I did not participate in that and didn't want it is because I've got 50 years of experience in construction, and I knew that the press, the chip and seal pavement was not going to hold up. The photographs that I'm showing you prove that. The other reason I didn't want it is they were going to relocate the road and shift it right up against the easement line, which I imagine would mean I would have to take my fence down at some point in time. So, that's the reason our portion of the road isn't paved. When I received a registered letter, and it was explained to me that the curbing was preventing the grader from coming down, I removed it. There are no obstructions, there's plenty of room down at the end of the road for the turnaround. You'll see that for the grader to get in there and turn around, and so consequently, I don't think access is an issue. The other thing is, is I understand from the registered letter that if I decide, and all the other neighbors on the street decide that we will deed the easement over to the property, over to the county, then the county can maintain it. That is not logical, because if you can't maintain it because it's too small now, how can you maintain it if it becomes property of the county, if you understand what I'm trying to say? The other thing is the taxes. The other two roads, basically, if you stop and look at what people are paying for taxes to have those two roads maintained, Canal Drive, the people are paying a total of $10,292 combined, all the residents on that road, which comes to a ratio of $21.45 per foot to maintain that road. Now, I know all that money doesn't go for maintaining the road, but I'm just trying to give you a perspective. And then, of course, John, I'm sorry, John's Place, they paid $2,290, and that's $7.64 of tax money per foot of road that's being maintained. Now, our road, we're paying $15,104 a year for taxes to three residents on the portion of the road that's unpaved as of right now, and that's a tax rate of $39 a running foot for this little bit of maintenance. Now, the reason the road should be maintained, because the County Public Works Department has made a huge issue over having to have a cul-de-sac at the end of the road for the use of emergency vehicles, plus the road is used for the garbage service to get down to the end of the road to collect garbage. And those are essential services that we have to have for rescue and for fire. And I guess basically, what it comes to is, I think, in full fairness, there's no reason to vacate this road, especially when there are 25 roads on the list right now for consideration for the county to start maintaining them. And of course, that begs the question, will those people be required to deed their property over to the county in order for the county to take them under the umbrella of maintaining the roads?
Thank you, Mr. Milstead.
That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments or questions? Mr. Tompkins, would you like to address any, any of Mr. Milstead's concerns prior to us moving on?
Yes, sir. The last time we did maintenance in there was around '14, and I think one time in '15. So, it's been a few years since we've even been in there to do any type of maintenance. And as we all know, and I'll say this, before we take any road into maintenance, it has to be owned by the county. That is, that goes without saying. My recommendation stands, Mr. Milstead had said he would remove all the obstacles and take that, but, you know, if he removed it today and puts them back two months when they have another civil feud out there, then I'm right back in the same situation. My recommendation stands that we should vacate it and not be involved in the situation out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tompkins. Any questions for Ms. Tompkins? All right, Mr. Tompkins, item number J. I'd like to go to that real quick. Page 94 of your packet. One quick question, and I apologize that I did not get time yesterday to contact you concerning this. I didn't see a date on the Ashley Lake Drive, when the, when the surveying and all is going to start.
As soon as we sign this contract.
You're on record now.
Very quickly. We, we've gone through all the proper procedures, through everything, and this is part of our advanced funding with DOT for Ashley Lake. So, as soon as we can get this contract approved, we can give those proceed to the consultant, and they can start doing the survey and all the preliminary work.
There is, on page one of five, there is no city of Melrose. Melrose is not a city.
That's correct.
It's a town, not even a town, it's a community. I would like to see some kind of timeframe. Mr. Turney, how do you feel about that? Because there is no time on this contract, so it's kind of open-ended.
Can you give me a minute to take a look?
Okay, yes, sir. So, if you've got to change that city of Melrose anyway, we could, we can easily fix... I would like for Melrose to be a city or a town. That would be interesting.
I don't believe we normally put timeframes on consulting contracts, because we have so many kind of open-ended items with the permitting and other agencies we have to deal with. We're kind of at their mercy. We make sure through our project management that the consultants are acting as quickly and as efficiently as they can, because if they don't proceed, if they don't produce, they don't get paid. So, that's one of the main things. But we are at the mercy of quite a few agencies, you know, DOT on the plans review, Water Management District, DEP, and those agencies. So, we normally don't put a hard deadline or hard date in these type of contracts.
Well, I'm comfortable with you knowing how important this area is, and as you well know, we talk about it monthly, and I'm glad that this is moving forward. So, if you're comfortable...
Yeah, it's, it's fine. I mean, I understand the reasons why, why they need to leave that time open, so they can make that determination of when the services are needed. So, it's not, it's not required that you have any sort of deadline for that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tompkins.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, that's the end of our consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion from items A through K.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
We have the proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, like sign. Okay, the ayes have it. Our next person up today, item number eight, 107 on your packet, is Gay Esperson, Putnam Blueways and Trails, requesting resolution supporting East Palaca Trail Beautification Project. She has a presentation she would like to do. And good morning. Uh-oh, and oops, that's not good.
That's interesting. Not what I'm used to. Good morning. My name is Gay Esperson. I live at 114 Riverview Drive in East Palaca. I'm here to represent, I present myself as a member of Putnam Blueways and Trails. I also am on the Parks and Recreation Committee, the, I've forgotten what it's called, and the Water Works, the Water and Trails Committee. I was appointed to that as well. There's a project that I'm interested in, and I've talked to the people who are, live in that area, and there are a few, few people here in the audience to support me. The trail in East Palaca.
It's on your monitors, too.
I will get it. Okay, so, the trail in East Palaca, this, I'm trying to get you oriented, is across the bridge, and it runs up Putnam County Boulevard.
Basically, from the post office area to...
Right, and so, here's another picture. It's from the post office to, I don't know, can I point to it? Yeah, from the post office up to East River Road, and it's about .8 miles. And it's very barren. This is a little close-up of a section of it. There, there are no trees, there are no bushes, there's nothing, and it, and people are using this trail, and it gets very hot, and it's kind of barren and not very welcoming. So, I've started a group to attempt to make this more appealing, and the, the plan that we've come up with is, is to create a park-like setting for this .8-mile section of the trail running between McCormick and East River Road. The community input, the local community input and buy-in is needed to make this successful. I'm, we're hoping that there's no cost to the county. That's the, that's the intent, that we'll get grants and donations to support this. And we will also have a plan laid out to, we'll try to make it as low maintenance as possible for the plantings, using natives, native plants, and as I said, trying to get funding from other sources other than the government here. So, the steps that I've come up with is first to get permission. I had to figure out who owned the land, and that took a while. It's FDOT, and I've talked to them, and they said, just give us a plan, and we'll, we'll approve it. So, but that took about nine months to get to that point. And I'm also...
You had a baby by that time.
I'm sorry?
You could have had a baby by that time.
Well, no, thank you. So, it's also important to get support from the community and from the county, so that we can proceed with this. The next step is to make a plan, and I have a vision of a very long, thin sheet of paper with the, the trail on it, and to bring it to the community, and have community meetings, and we start drawing on it and figuring out what, what makes sense to be there. And I think it's critical for the local community to have that input, because they live there. They know what's, what's needed. They know what would work for that community. And I've asked Bob Stender for a, a, a plan, but he's, that, the trail has not yet been put on GIS, so that has to, that's, I guess, the next step to, to get the GIS overlay. Once we have a plan, and we've, we've passed it by different people, I, I would like it to be acceptable to the, the Public, Public Works, because right now, they're mowing it. And I understand that mowing around things is a problem. So, we would, we would lay it out so that the, the mowing would be easy. And I, I'm going to try to get a landscape architect to help us lay this out, make sure that we're not putting things in the wrong place. Once we get this plan laid out, then we would go for money and grants and donations, and as they come in, we'll know where to put them, so that it isn't all helter-skelter. And I'm asking your, for your support for this project that will probably take several years to, to finalize. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Troyana from the Water Management District is here, and I would like to encourage you to swap information with Ms. Esperson right now, as far as contacts go, and maybe if, I know the Water Management District, I think they still have their native drought-resistant plant program going, that maybe we could receive one of the first grants right there behind you.
That would be fabulous, thank you.
I think this could work. All right.
Thank you. Any other questions as to what?
Linear parks are great. It's the wave of the future, and I want to thank you for doing this, and I think the faith-based community in that neighborhood is, they're going to be incredible for you. They really are. This, this section of our county is, is growing really fast, and to create something beautiful there, we should do. We really should. It's been an eyesore for a long time, and don't dig too deep under that ground.
No, 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 no. That's why we want a landscape architect to help us, so we don't, we don't dig anything up.
Public Works, where you go too deep, but this commissioner, and I'm sure the rest, we, we will do anything we, in our power, to help you with this project.
I very much appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, and we appreciate it, and we look forward to your plan coming out.
Okay.
And I'm sure we can get busy digging and helping you plant.
Oh, that would be awesome. Thank you.
I'll even bring my cooker, we'll cook something.
All right, a party.
Can't go anywhere without cooking, huh?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. The request was for a resolution to support the effort, so...
Do we have a resolution?
We don't have a res, Ms. Esperson, do you?
She was here in requesting a resolution. Your staff could...
Did you bring one?
Oh, maybe it could be prepared for the next meeting.
Um, I think the resolution...
Right here.
Was submitted. I'm sorry.
My, I didn't, I didn't pull back the second page, and I, I apologize. Commissioner Lible, would you like to read the resolution?
Absolutely. "A resolution supporting the East Putnam Trail Beautification Project, whereas the county has received a request from Putnam Blueways and Trails to support the creation of a park-like setting for 0.8-mile section of East Palaca Trail, which lies between McCormick Road and East River Road in East Palaca. And whereas Putnam Blueways and Trails is a volunteer-driven nonprofit organization with a mission of promoting and protecting our blueways and trails. And whereas, Putnam Blueways and Trails supports the acquisition, development, operation, and non-motorized use of water and land trails in Putnam County and the state of Florida in an environmentally sustainable manner. And whereas Putnam County, or Putnam Blueways and Trails, in conjunction with local residents, desires to further improve the East Palaca Trail. And whereas Putnam Blueways and Trail anticipates funding for beautification will come from grants and various fundraisers, resulting in a non-expected upfront cost to the county and a minimal maintenance. And whereas the Putnam County Waterways and Trails Committee approved the proposed plan on June 8, 2017. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida hereby express its support of Putnam..." hereby express its support of Putnam Blueways and Trails Beautification Plan and Improvement Efforts for the East Palaca Trail, done, ordered, and adopted this twenty-seventh day of June, two thousand seventeen. Thank you.
Would you like to move that forward?
Oh, yes, I would like to move it forward in the form of a motion.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible to support this resolution?
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none? Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. I will sign the resolution, and so will Mr. Smith. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, moving right along, codes enforcement, fine reduction. Mr. John Salmon's already standing at the podium waiting. Good deal.
This case, two thousand thirteen, zero four thirty-two, two fourteen, Phoenix and Satsuma. Denise Davis is the owner. This may sound familiar to you, because it was here on May ninth. After, we had the hearing on May ninth, Ms. Davis really didn't get up and say anything. After the meeting, she indicated that she would like to have gotten it reduced farther than it was. I told her at that point in time that the board had already made a decision, so I had to go by that. And then, probably a few weeks later, Larry emailed me and said, is it possible to rehear a fine reduction case? And I said that, we haven't done it very often, but we've done it a couple of times. And so he asked me to call Ms. Davis. I called her, and I told her that I would bring it back before you today to give her a chance to talk to you. Our recommendation was that the twenty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-dollar, nine hundred twenty-five dollar fine be reduced to five hundred eighty-three dollars. It was paid within six months, and Ms. Davis can, I hope she's here.
Ms. Davis here?
Yes, I'm good.
I don't think she's...
I don't know why she's here, but, why she's not here. I told her we'd, we'd be bringing it today, but she wanted it to be lower than what it is.
Okay.
And I, I told her that.
Commissioner Lible?
In the notes, of course, we don't have the same information or, that we had before, but I noticed the ownership has not changed. From the time staff has started on this case, nothing's changed.
Right.
So, my question to you was, our exact cost is five hundred eighty-three dollars?
Yes.
Okay, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
With that, I move a motion that we uphold our actions of the last meeting on this case.
Proper motion by Commissioner Lible?
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, like sign. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Salmon, we appreciate it. Our next order of business will be the appointments process. And commissioners, are there any appointments that you'd like to make?
I have none today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
I have none.
Thank you.
I have none.
Thank you. And I have none. I would like to ask the board to be thinking about if we're able to expand the fishing fund committee. We have a few people that would like to serve on that committee. It's pretty full now, but we could make it an at-large, a couple seats at-large. But we can do that in the future, if you'd just entertain that thought. Next item of business, County Administrator, acting County Administrator, Stacy Papel.
I have a couple of things. First, I understand congratulations are in order. I recently found out that Commissioner Harvey was appointed to serve as Vice Chair of the Rural Caucus for the upcoming twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen fiscal year. And he's been, let me find the words, selected as a twenty seventeen presidential advocate for FAC's annual conference and all that entails. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Secondly, you asked me to bring an item today, late last night. In our Budget Review Committee workshop yesterday, the committee voted, not unanimously, to recommend to the board that we rescind the board's approval for going down the route of fully insured insurance for our employees and consider self-insurance. You also asked me to make rates last night. Brenda Bridges, Ann Allen, and I stayed till eight o'clock last night, looking at the self-insurance proposal. And we played with the numbers, and I must tell you, as a licensed CPA, ethically, I cannot perform, perform work. I am unqualified to perform. So, we looked at the rates, but we did not make our own rates. Benji Bates did say at the meeting that it would be appropriate to just knock four percent off the existing full insurance rates. And we did prepare something for you to look at based on that. You won't like it. It's not significantly different. Then Benji did also send me an email this morning with some tentative rates, with the expression that he didn't feel comfortable making rates, and he was trying to get rates from Blue Cross. So, should you care to look at it, I have something you won't like, that's not significantly different from what you saw yesterday in the Budget Review Committee. Or we can wait and see what Blue Cross brings back to us. I, I feel very comfortable tweaking rates or preparing a budget, but insurance is not my expertise, and I'm not a rate maker. So, I don't know what, what route you want to take with this. I will get you rates, we can call a special meeting when we have rates, but I do not have rates I feel comfortable with, because what I looked at was significantly lower than four percent, less than the full insurance rates. What Benji sent me, he even said that it should be significantly lower than what he came up with. So, I think you've got two professionals who aren't rate makers, who think the rates will be lower than what we've come up with just messing around. But I don't have a product to give you, and ethically I shouldn't.
Ms. Papel, I understand. My concern as a commissioner was the fact that the county contribution effort, we were taking a big bite of the apple. And when I say that, going from four point seven million dollars roughly, last year the county contribution down to three point two million, the county contribution. And I, and I know we have to save money, and I know that's a big, that's one of the areas we can possibly see that. We had talked about three point five, but it came to three point two. That's a significant savings right there, about a one point five million dollar savings on the insurance fund. My concern was what the county contribution could do to the employees. And we looked at some of those numbers, and it, it could hurt a, a lot of employees pretty bad. So, it seemed to be that the Budget Review Committee, with the help of the other commissioners and the people in the room, we, we dissected it and beat it up and threw it against the wall and stomped on it and did everything we could yesterday. And it seems like if we could find savings, it would be in the self-insured arena. And the, the savings would, would show up to our employees a little bit easier than the fully insured model would look like. That's me looking at it from my standpoint. When you look at the rates, last year or the current year that we're in, our employees contributed nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of their money to that. So, we kind of know what the rate would be. It would almost be what it is now, less the three hundred thousand, if you will, give or take, that we'd have to make up. And I think that's the question, is can we take that big of a bite of the apple, or can we not? Should we take one point five, or should we take one point two million? And I think that's the question that's at hand here, in my mind. And it, it really just comes down... So, my point is, if you, if you left the rate, if you left the employee contribution at nine fifty-eight, then the rate pretty much stays the same of what we do, what we're currently doing today. With the exception that we would have to go from, find the three hundred thousand dollar difference, is my point. Do you agree with that, or?
I don't know.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a fair question. I mean, we, you know, right now we're in a budget crunch, and we're looking at our economically challenged county, and we're looking at everything. And we'd need to, we need to look at it fully. So, your recommendation would be to call another meeting to...
My recommendation would be for us to secure rates from somebody who is qualified to make rates, be that Florida Blue, be that hiring somebody to make rates for us. We have a bit of a conundrum here, because we need to put rates in the system to have open enrollment. So, we, we have a serious time crunch here. Waiting for more information from Bates and Hewitts, who is the Blue, is the agent for Blue Cross. And I can keep you posted. I can't, I cannot offer you rates today, not rates that I would hang my hat on or ask you to.
The consensus yesterday with the three Budget Review Committee members, and you being one, by ordinance, myself, and by, and Vice Chairman Goddard, and by the way, we need to change that one day, but that's a whole different topic. But if we did stay with the fully insured fund, your recommendation was pretty dramatic on the county participation side.
Was it, though?
I felt it was.
Months ago, you asked me to just...
Yep, we needed to...
You know, estimate a number.
Right.
And I estimated five hundred dollars.
Right.
And I brought you five hundred and twenty.
Right. No, I, I get that, and, but we added a administration fee per the employee that they're going to have to pay, that normally wasn't being paid. And we looked at the different models that you brought, and we appreciate that. But I think the, the consent, well, your proposal was the bottom one, and Commissioner Goddard and I were trying to go to the higher one, the fifty percent model, which truly, again, still put a lot of responsibility financially on our employees. So, we know that. Now, should we have fixed that a long time ago? Possibly so. But today, it's a big bite for those people to have to take, and we don't want to see a mass exodus of our employees based on health insurance premiums. So, we have a, we have work to do. And, and I know you're trying to get a number plugged in as quick as possible, but we, I feel like I need the right numbers too, to move forward on this, on this issue. There, I'm going to be quiet and let the other commissioners speak.
I didn't hear a question, so...
No, there wasn't. It was just the rambling of, yeah, I know. Mr. Woods, if you'll come up to the podium?
Ansel Woods, Captain, Putnam County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. You were also on the committee, correct? The review committee?
Yes, on the review committee. I believe that you're at a, a very important juncture right here. And the one thing of tremendous importance that I wanted to foregive you to consider right now at this moment was something you, and you have just said just a few moments ago. We believe that there should be lower rates associated with the self-funded program. We just don't have those yet. I believe that this is such a critical issue at this point in time, for the reasons you have said, at how devastating this could be to a large number of our employees, which we all depend upon as a county, both citizens and as the governing body, that we can't afford a mass exodus. So, we need to get this right. You, you need to get this right. Everyone involved needs to get this right. So, I think it is, if there is any way that we can delay making this decision, we need to get what the best estimate of the self-funded insurance rates are. Because I truly believe from everything I have said, and hundreds and hundreds of pages that I've poured through personally, and discussions from many people that have been focused on this, as you all know, for several weeks now, that it does appear that there should be a savings with the self-funded. We need to get those rates. Please, please, take your time, slow down, take a deep breath, and let's get those as quickly as we can reach out and get them, not only possibly from, from Florida Blue, or the Florida Sheriff's Association, or some other whoever that we can get them, particularly if we can get good data from Florida Blue on what our, good actuary data on what our actual numbers were, our claims data from the past, then it should not be that difficult for somebody to step up and get us some rate quotes quickly. And this is too important to rush right now, so I think we should all take a deep breath and hold up and call that special meeting, that special workshop or whatever, so that we have the best chance that we can to get this done and do it the right way.
Mr. Woods, I appreciate that. We did have, when we had our committee meeting, and we brought every provider into the room, all of them were asked the question, were these actually sound claims experience projections? And they all said yes. So, Florida Blue had those numbers. They currently have our insurance. So, I felt very comfortable. If anybody had the true number, they would have the true number.
Yes, they should.
And they admitted they had the true number. So, on their claims projections, they felt very actually sound that that was the correct number. So, we know that. The rest of it, how much is the county going to take more bite of the apple? That's where we're at right now. And the county contribution back to the employees. I would like to keep things the way they are, because I don't want to mess up our employees or our valuable asset that they are. But, you know, that's, I think we took a too big of a bite on this.
I get that, but the thing I'm hearing that does not make any sense is just knocking four percent off of the full insured rate.
No, I agree with you.
And I don't believe Ms. Papel does. That doesn't make sense. It, it should, by all accounts, be lower than that. That's what I'm asking for us to reach out and get that best estimate possible.
Yeah, and we can reach out to Florida Blue, and they can reach out. They, they actually hire their own agent to produce this. We don't do that. We don't have an agent of record here locally, so they, Florida Blue does their own.
Benji, I think, has rates.
I see his hand up. I do, I see him over there. But I was just saying, we can reach out to them and really start whittling this down. Time is of the essence, so we really got to move forward and try to get this done, so...
It is. I, I understand the time crunch, but sometimes when you're under pressure and under stress, and this is coming from a law enforcement training background, sometimes that's when you have to take a deep breath, calm yourself, and let time slow down for you, so you can focus and get it right, and not get yourself tied up into a false sense of urgency. We, there, there is urgency, I get that, but let's get it right, please.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Woods? Thank you, sir, for your comments. We appreciate it. Mr. Bates, would you like to come up and just...
Yes, sir. How are y'all doing this morning? Um, to clarify the rates, we have expected, and we have maximum, and I'll share with that. What we don't have is, how do you break that down with three plans in the four different tiers? That's what we weren't comfortable analyzing.
Me either.
Yeah. We know our expected claims, I think we agreed with that number, similar to what you had yesterday, Mr. Harvey. Four, seven, four, right, right under four point eight million is what we expect. The maximum, because again, you know, you're buying that one twenty-five, so on the back end, the maximum is the five point eight oh three.
Buying a hundred and fifty.
No, sir. You're buying a hun, okay, so you're buying a hundred and fifty per person.
Right.
Then you're buying a one twenty-five aggregate on top.
Right.
So, we expect things, in a perfect world, run about four point eight million. However, you know, again, two years ago, we saw, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I don't think, I'm just history. You have a spike, then it could be five point eight. At five point eight, that's... that's whenever you pay out and that's when reinsurance pays everything. So, there's that, there's always that gap between what are we expected to run? And our reinsurance, is it the one twenty-five per person, but your aggregate is actually, is at the twenty-five percent? Now, I can tell you from experience in it, very rarely, typically like five percents of groups ever hit their aggregate, their one twenty-five. It's rare. Okay, but it is a possibility, so I do want to share that. But, we have expected, overall, expected and maximum. I just didn't feel comfortable in short amount of time without talking to an underwriter and okaying it, breaking those down because you guys have three plans and you also have, um, four different tiers within that. And again, we were also trying to work and get imaging put in on the core plan. So, that's why I think when we said we don't have rates, those are the rates we don't have. But, we have the kind of, we have the expected and maximum.
When can we get rates?
Oh, I, the, I, I haven't had a chance to even call underwriting. I would suspect today or tomorrow. I mean, it, it's going to be an extrapolation of, you know, it's going of that four point eight million dollars, um, which is less than the county paid, what was it, five point four current year? Um, minus three for the reduction. So, it, they're going to be less. But, you know, as I said before, that's year one.
Right.
Next year, we're going, it, me, anybody is going to say, okay, we have a fully mature stop loss and we understand that. We're, we'll see an increase there. So, it's, it's, it's a three, I mean, I'd say it's a, you know, it's a long-term process, um, with that. But, I would think today I'll call and get it. I just haven't with not getting out until after five last night and this morning, we haven't had a chance to break those, but we'll have those for them.
Mr. Bates, let me ask you this. Did we make our proposal too complicated with the different scenarios? Maybe we should just, you know, like, the conversation in the room yesterday was a lot about the core plan and driving people to the core plan with a better generic drug card. I know self-funding, we can create that ourself and we can receive some benefits back from pharmacies. So, there's some wiggle room there, but have we complicated the issue by too many plans and too many unknowns right now?
Well, I mean, I think with anything, you have a time crunch. There are a lot of unknowns. You know, I think the biggest unknown still, which still drives all of this, is the county contribution. Um, and, and even, even if you, you know, even if you do the self-funded and fund that expected, I don't think that, that takes a bite out of the apple, but it doesn't eat the whole thing. There's still, you know, and, and that, and trust me, I mean, I've been up every night, like many of you, like, you know, I don't want to have to have employees have these, you know, a hundred dollar a month increase on the family. Like, I can't imagine having to, nobody wants that.
Right.
Um, but, I mean, it, it's been a, it's been a process. But, again, you know, as Andy said and I, you know, Florida Blue, they're committed to working with the county and doing what the county needs to take care of its employees.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Bates while he's here? All right, we thank you very much.
So, do you want to defer this conversation to a special meeting when we have something more tangible to talk about? Or do you want to take action of some sort now?
You know, we have a, in my opinion, we have a meeting next Friday that's gonna be a lot of things involved in it. But, we're all here and we're here that day, the July seventh meeting.
It's going to be extremely difficult, I venture to say impossible, for me to stay awake from Saturday meeting to present you a budget, balanced budget Tuesday morning. I think this decision needs to be made sooner than that.
Other than July fourth, I'm available. I mean, so, Commissioner?
I was hoping later this week. I know some of you are leaving to go out of town. When do you come back?
Friday. Is the attorney available too?
I'll be here on Saturday.
No, I won't be here.
How's our Monday look, Commissioners? I think.
I'm gonna be, I'll be out of town. Now, if that's the only day we can meet, I guess I can drive back over.
When will you be, would, how's Wednesday?
I can make Wednesday work.
Commissioners, liable?
I just seem to do it right now. How about that?
But, if we don't have the proper rating structure?
I mean, I have the four percent knocked off, you know, different scenarios you talked about yesterday with its impact to the general fund, but it's not much rosier than what I presented, the scenarios I presented yesterday with full insurance. If you would like to look at them, I'll gladly pass them out.
You can pass them out, but I want to see actual numbers, uh, is what I'd like to see. Mr. Goddard, your Wednesday, July fifth, I was asking, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I think it's a fair question. I've gotta ask it. I know you prefer the self-insurance and it makes me very nervous that we're doing this in a hurry. And I think it's fair to ask, what would be your plan if our, uh, uh, claims rate is unusually high? What ha, give me the consequences. Do we crash the county or do you have a plan for that not to happen?
Well, that's a very loaded question, but.
Well, that's what we're looking at, you know?
The self-funded, the fully funded is going to crash our employees at the tune of eight hundred dollars a month on family coverage. So, we'll see a mass exodus of our employees. To answer the question, worst possible scenario, we fund this, uh, with the money the county has at the three point two million dollar range. Um, most of our income comes in the first three months of the fiscal year. We fund this. If we start seeing that we're in trouble, then we go back to our partners, our employees, and let them know. But, if we can keep our rates where they're at today and we can keep our health where it's at, then I believe it's, it's a risk that's worth taking. What's not a risk worth taking is to throw an eight hundred dollar percentage or eight hundred dollar a month increase on the backs of our employees and we have nothing to talk about because we have no more employees. And that's what I'm afraid of. And I'm seeing heads shaking out there that they're agreeing with this. We don't have a choice here. We got backed in the corner by previous situations that took place and we're here today. And we're gonna make lemonade out of lemons. I'm gonna tell you that. This board's committed to that. Um, so that's my plan. And my plan is we're going to move as hard as we can. We're going to hire the right people to make sure we manage our, our expenses and our claims and get the most possible rebates we can get back and go forward.
All right, so let's drill down a little bit. You, you still, you don't have a plan if we run out of money. You really don't. You say you go back to the employees and then you go on to say that I'm advocating for not covering them exactly like we are now, and that's where you're wrong. I want full coverage for every employee and their families. It's the only thing we can offer as a county with our low salary rate. We're surrounded in a sea of salaries that are way more than Putnam County offers. The least we can do is stand up and provide leadership in this crisis and give them the benefit of decent coverage with their insurance.
And I understand that. So, how do you, how do you propose then, the question?
There'll be a millage increase.
Come up with another million dollars that needs to be done. Including, the millage increase doesn't even touch the deficit that we're at. Even if we went to ten mills, we're still gonna be making short.
We have not gone through the budget line item by line item to see what we can cut.
You're right there. You're correct.
Now, with that, I want coupled and paralleling all through this process, what our projections are out to two thousand and twenty. Our industrial base is expanding as we talk. We're gonna have future tax revenues coming in the year nineteen twenty. We need to go to the public with a roadshow and say, this is our plan to get out of this predicament. And we have to be transparent, get their approval, hopefully, and go forward. And I, that's all I'm interested in. I'm not interested in taking a big chance. I'm only one commissioner, but I don't, the self-insurance, I'm being very honest, scares me because there is no way out if it goes south.
Well, there's no way out if we can't raise the millage. There's no way out. We can't afford to meet our commitments when we're looking at a deficit of a few million dollars and the millage won't even raise the deficit that we're looking at. And we have no fund balance to go back to because we spent it.
We have not finished our process this year.
We have not finished our process and we are going to do that next week on July seventh.
So, you need to hook these dates up. We're talking about today with that process ending. And we'll know exactly what dollars we have.
I mentioned that we could do that on July seventh, but, uh, our acting administrator doesn't want to wait that long because she needs some numbers to plug in.
And we need numbers for open enrollment. And I will be happy to project out to two thousand and twenty, but I won't have that done by July seventh. Not three-year projections as long, and a balanced budget. It's, I'm one.
What would it take to get that done? Because, like no other place in history, in recent history, uh, we're in a predicament here. And we have to do that. You took on the extra responsibilities of, of interim county administrator and I feel strongly that that's prohibiting us from getting this information. Do you want to change that? I'm asking you politely.
I serve at your will.
Well, it's gotta be your decision. It was very adamant, but Commissioners, I mean, we've got to have this information. What would free you up to get this information?
Well, she's hired, our acting administrator, Mr. Mr. Lible, has hired people that are helping her right now getting this information. This was a big nut to crack in defense of Ms. Papel and she was handed a mess and she's trying to weed through that.
I, I don't deny any of that, but.
We're learning through the budget process that there were prior issues that we didn't know about. And now, we're getting things as transparent as we can. It's uncomfortable. And I agree, it's uncomfortable, but that's what we get paid for and that's what we're gonna make this decision on.
So, the timelines.
Question on the table.
That were traditionally in place are not working for us. But, we keep going back and expecting our staff and we as Commissioners to live with those timelines. Either they have to be adjusted or we have to make adjustments.
Commissioner Lible, I'll meet every day if that, if that's.
I will too. What's it gonna take, you know? This is big. It's very big. The future is bright. We just experienced a great week last week. Let's keep going on that. Let's make it happen and let's not let our employees down. And I mean it. The, the only thing we have is benefits.
Well, I think if you was to poll our employees, and I'm just gonna say this, 'cause I'm seeing heads shake in the audience, yes or no? You know, do you saddle them with an eight hundred dollar a month increase?
Absolutely not.
Or do you say, let's take a chance and all work together and make this other process work? And I can tell you, I believe our employees are our best asset and they'll, they'll come up and they'll say, we're in all this together. 'Cause I do not want to see a mass exodus from any department in this county. So, the question on the table is, you want to make this decision today, but this decision today to fully fund it might not be, Ms. Papel, you, your proposal was a zero funding.
My, my proposal is and has been to stay with full insurance because I think we're rushing wildly into self-insurance instead of moving cons, with consideration and knowledge and ease into self-insurance. I don't think we're going to fully come out of this fiscal crunch by next year. And we've heard Benji Bates say next year, the rates will be, at least what I heard was next year, the rates will be worse than this year because we'll have a mature plan with the tail coming in and have to be paid.
I hear that like that.
I told, I brought you scenarios yesterday.
Yes, you did.
And said, at this scenario, we have a two point two million dollar deficit to overcome. And this scenario, we have a two point five. In this scenario, we have a two point eight. And this, you know, roughly, I did not bring that with me today. At the end of the day, it's your decision.
And I respect that. And I agree with Commissioner Lible that, you know, when we look at, when we start, sit down on the July seventh and start going line by line and whittling it some more. You've already whittled it some, a lot, before you brought that.
I've whittled it from four point five to two point two.
You brought that to us yesterday.
And I'm not through.
And you're not through, and neither are we at this point. Um, so for us to go in there and say we want to completely add another million or a million and a half to it by going, keeping all things the same, we might not be able to afford that. And our millage increase, if there is one, wouldn't support that number. So, I think that we've got to be practical of what gives us the best option to get out of this situation. And I believe that's self-funding.
I understand that. And, and I think self-funding would bring lower rates and higher risk. And I'm glad that I'm not the person that has to make the decision whether to take that risk or not. I'd sleep better at night not making it. Um.
But, I want our employees to have jobs and not have a mass exodus because they can't afford to carry the health insurance, so they're gonna go unhealthy. It, it's a not a win-win situation because.
There's no win here.
Because then when we go self-funding in a few years from now or, or next year, we're gonna have sicker employees than the ones that hang on. That's not acceptable to me. So, I'm willing. Insurance is a risk and we all know that when we buy policies. We all know that. And we can minimize the risk by buying the reinsurance and we did that. So, it's with a reputable, I mean, I just don't see the issue here. And I think it's the only way our employees can actually see the same as they have now or a modest increase, but not the increase that's being proposed. And I don't see.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Let me be clear. Self-insurance is what we need to do. But, the approach should be one of caution and, uh, we need to take our time. Next year, I would like to see that happen. But, this rush, one catastrophic event, and we're out of business as a county. I mean, it's that close. And it, it could happen. And, and you've been in the insurance business. You know that is a huge risk. I don't think, you're assuming that a millage increase won't cover it, but we don't know. We don't have the numbers. I do not want to take that assumption to heart right now until we have that final day to look at the actual end numbers. Can, if we can afford it, the safe way is the best way.
Thank you, Commissioner Lible. I appreciate that. I don't mind looking at the real numbers like you just said, but we're not looking at the real numbers today. So.
These are not the real numbers.
These aren't real numbers, so I'm not willing.
These are not the real numbers.
So, I'll be looking at a Wednesday, July fifth meeting to get real numbers and go from there.
It's fine with me. And we're gonna come out of this.
We're gonna come out.
We've got things on, you know, the radar screen now that are gonna mature. You know, we can see light at the end of the tunnel.
Commissioner Pickens, you're driving the furthest away. What time's a good time? I'm thinking one o'clock, July fifth, Wednesday, July fifth.
That'll be fine.
That'll be fine. How about you, Commissioner Lible?
Fine.
Commissioner Goddard?
What time?
One o'clock.
One?
Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Goddard?
I, I'd just like to say, 'cause I'm sitting between you two.
We're not fighting. We're just enjoying the conversation.
You know, it, it's, it's one of those where we all want the very best thing for our county. That's the whole thing. Catastrophically, the decision to go self-funding could go bad. But, I'm also looking catastrophically if we, we have got to put that on the table. And we've seriously got to look at that because if we raise those rates to the employees, that's gonna be catastrophic when they walk away.
I'm not advocating for that.
So, I know, but if you don't have the money, I understand.
You don't know you don't have the money. You will the fifth at one P M.
We know that self-funding is a substantial savings.
I'm not willing to run the ship up on the rocks.
I understand that. And I looked at a whole lot of different things. Uh, I tried everything to get back up to that eighty. I, based on what we had, I couldn't get to the eighty. I could get to the fifty. And that's by going up on millage. That's by cutting back on the departments. Nobody wants their departments cut back, but that's cutting back on departments. That's going up on millage and that's going self-funding.
But, it keeps the ship afloat.
And that's.
Even if we don't.
Even if we don't go self. Everything you just said might have to happen.
That's true.
It's, this is hard, isn't it?
It is. It is. And, but the best part is, we have a group here. We have a group everywhere that we've been that wants to see our county propel forward. Now, the, the reason I'm still on the self-insured is our surrounding areas. All the counties around us are doing that.
They meticulously went about doing it. They set it up properly. They didn't do it in a vacuum.
We should have done this a long time ago, but we didn't.
Exactly right.
But, anyway, I'm looking forward to the 5th. It's all going to be settled there by 2:00.
Okay.
Let me say this too. We have not done this in a vacuum. As soon as I became, this committee was set up in August of last year. Soon as I became chairman, we started having meetings. And we are moving this forward. So this has been the most transparent process. Even I called a special meeting when we found out the numbers were not correct. We called a special meeting so we could have transparency. So there's no vacuum here. This is completely a fishbowl at this point. Mr. Tompkins, you had a question, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lible.
I've got to say something there. You agreed with a full insurance program in those meetings just a few weeks ago. And now we've changed at the last minute, the last hour. So what I said is true.
What happened yesterday is you were given a different number than you were, than you were given for the, we were looking at a 3.5 million off the, it wasn't a hard number, but it was a number. Yesterday, it became 3.2 million, which made a big difference. And we heard from our department heads that even at the 50% level, we're still seeing a walk. And we heard that yesterday. That's what changed my mind.
Well, none of these numbers are hard.
Mr. Tompkins.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to reiterate what I've said in the past at the Insurance Committee. My employees make 10, 11, $12 an hour. Their take-home pay is maybe 16, 17 hundred dollars a month. If you ask them to pay $800 a month for health insurance, I'm going to have a bunch of homeless people. That's the fact.
Yes, sir.
Okay? I don't know what we can do about it, but, and then there's the rumor mill that we're going to take a 4% or 5% reduction in pay. If you ask them to do a pay reduction and pay for insurance, you might as well change the doors because I'm not going to have a soul over there to work. And I just want people to know that. We're doing everything we can at Public Works to cut our budget, to do what we can. We're doing the most we can with the least amount of people we have right now. I've got four or five open positions right now I can't fill. My employees can go to McDonald's and make more money than I can pay them. And you're exactly right. If we don't offer them benefits, we don't have a darn thing to offer them. And I'm, I'm very passionate about it.
Thank you.
I just wanted the board to know that.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. We appreciate that. Okay, so this meeting is going-
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Stacy.
If, the, the action at the last board meeting was to award the Florida Blue fully funded contract, if you are not intending to do that at this point, then we would need a motion to rescind that action.
Also, I think you need Ms. Allen to tell you the impacts of delaying the decision on open enrollment and actually being able to successfully move to any insurance on 10-1. Ms. Allen?
Point of order, though, there's a motion on the floor.
Is there?
Or they asked for a motion on the floor.
Well, there's no motion yet.
Well, do you, yeah, all right. We're okay? Mr. Manning?
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. Open enrollment is scheduled to start July 17th through August 15th. We are required by the IRS code to offer the pre-tax premiums to hold a 30-day open enrollment. We have payroll cycles that we have to meet. And the deduction amount for the new plan effective October 1 must start coming out of the paycheck September 1. It is a long and arduous process because we have four payroll cycles to oversee. July 17th is our first meeting with all the vendors. We have about 15 meetings set up already with all the vendors coming and all of our partners. And we have new dental, vision, and life vendors that we are also having to struggle to get that information updated so the employees will know those new benefit and providers. So we're doing a lot right now. And I'm not sure really if we could delay our open enrollment much later. And I'm not sure if our vendors would be available to assist us through that transitional period and enrolling everyone. We also have an online employment or online application where they go in and select their benefits. And that deadline has passed already for us to provide the, the rates. I have a commitment from Bates and Hewitt that they are going to help us key in that data as soon as it's available. But we're already at the critical point here. It's a critical turning point for us.
Ms. Allen, if we do go self-funding, let's just go down this scenario. Blue Cross already has 532 or 36 of our employees' data. It's not a hard sell to go from Blue Cross fully funded to Blue Cross self-insured. It's the same application, I would imagine. It's nothing any different there. So we could start open enrollment July 17th, as you said, and just let the employees know. But you're asking me today to say 50%, 100%? I don't know that number, and I can't do that today without that hard number in my hand. So I understand the timeframe. I get it. But we're trying to make this as beneficial to our employees as we possibly can.
I certainly understand that, and I appreciate that very much. This is very near and dear to all of our employees, as has been stated previously. One other thing that we do before open enrollment begins is we send them the information to let them know how the process went through, what the new vendors are and what their rates are so they can plan and make the best choice this year for their changes. And without having that information, it puts us in a difficult situation. The other thing I wanted to mention was the educational point for our employees and why we have these meetings is because we have to explain to them the new providers, and we are changing three of the vendors. So I am delighted that if it were to go self-funded, it would be the same vendor. That certainly makes it much easier for us. That would stop a lot of the time. I'm not sure if there's something we could do in the meantime. If we could discuss this maybe with Bates and Hewitt, a tentative rate, and then get that information at the last minute if we were needing to adjust it, that may help us. Our employees are very anxious to find out as well. And I too want our, our employees to get what they deserve and the benefits. So it's a very difficult decision, and I appreciate the situation you're in. It's not an easy one at all.
Question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lible. Ms. Allen, is the, we call them health fairs, but the enrollment time period, is that mandatory for every employee?
Yes, sir. It is mandatory. And there are some requirements due to healthcare reform that we have to have a signature from each employee. And that's done electronically now through Benefitfocus. And our plan designs are all in there, and that's where they make their decisions. And that's the, the feature that I'm talking about. We need to update that data so we can have each pay cycle. When they go in there and look at it, they'll know what it's going to cost them weekly or bi-weekly, depending on their, their pay, so they can make those decisions.
My opinion, July 5th, 1:00, we're going to bring this to a head, and it's over with.
Hard numbers.
Hard numbers and decision we make will be a final, that'll be our final answer.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Goddard.
With that said, I'd like to make a motion to rescind our previous award of the fully funded to be able to put it off until after the 5th.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard. We have a second. I will second it. We have a proper motion second. Any further discussion?
Do we, why do we have to do that if we're just looking at, you know, another, another way to do the insurance?
That was going to be my question.
Because the award, you, you agreed last meeting to award the fully funded plan, a fully funded plan to Blue Cross or Florida Blue, according to their bid. So if you're looking at awarding to them or another vendor for self-funded, then you have to rescind the action that you took last time to award the fully funded plan.
But it's, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pickens, you have the floor, sir.
So we're just looking, I mean, I'm not sure if we're going to award it to, you know, self-funding or not.
Well, true, but you've got a vendor out there that, you know, he got indications from this board that it has been awarded. So your safest route is to, is to rescind that action. And then if you decide at that point, well, you still want to go with them, then you can go ahead and, and vote again to award as you previously did. But I don't recommend having an award out there, just hanging out there for a month. It just, it doesn't, it's, it doesn't, it creates a liability.
Mike and, Mr. Pickens, I'm sorry to use the floor, sir.
Okay, so if we do that, then we would have to vote again to, to award it to either to register funding or to the self-funding.
Yes.
What if it ends up in a 2-2 tie?
Then you don't have an award at all. The other option, I guess, would be to leave it as is and hope the, the vendor doesn't push the issue.
That's my question, is about potential litigation.
Well, it appears the vendor is wanting to work on whatever remedy he can find for the, or they can find for the county. And whether it be fully funded or self-funded, they appear to be very eager to help us out. And maybe not be in such a hurry for the chairman's signature at that point.
Things can always change.
They can always change, yes.
My question is also potential litigation by other bidders.
Well, I'm, I'm not as concerned about that. This, this board has the, has the authority under the purchasing agreement to accept, reject, change recommendations, award bids as it deems appropriate, and to waive any irregularities. And considering the circumstance that you all are in, I could make a very sound argument that you have justification for doing any or all of those.
Thank you. I don't see the need. I second the motion but, for discussion, but I don't see the need for us to be changing, rescinding anything right now when we're going to have a meeting next Wednesday to finalize all this discussion. Now, at that meeting, we're going to live and die by the decision we made. And I just don't feel, I feel our vendor is working with us. They have a good faith that something will happen, and they know that. And it appears to me that they're all in for the benefit of the county. So I'm, I kind of have the same concern as Commissioner Pickens does. Any further discussion? We have a proper motion. Okay, we have a proper second. So all in favor signify by saying aye to rescind the past actions of this board.
Aye.
Okay, we have an aye. All opposed? Aye.
Aye.
You voted, Mr. Lible?
No, I did not. Restated and-
Commissioner, buddy, Commissioner Goddard's motion was to rescind the award for Blue Cross and Blue Shields fully funded. It had a proper second, and-
Well, let, let's stop right there. Did we have a proper second?
We did have a proper second.
Yes, the, the chair can second the motion.
Okay.
The chair can second the motion.
All right.
So, and we have a vote, and you cannot not vote.
I'm not trying to do that.
Well, you just did. You didn't vote.
Understanding the motion, it's kind of taken a lot of twists and turns with this deal. So counsel.
Sir.
Clarity on the motion.
The motion is to, to rescind the prior action of this board, which would, the prior action being award of the contract to Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Nay.
Fully funded.
Thank you. The nays have it, three to one. Thank you very much. All right, commissioners, let's move on to our agenda. Let's see where we're at. Okay, county attorney, do you have any comments?
Actually, I do. Want to go back to the consent agenda, item I. I was looking at this further as this process was going along here today. And this, I would ask that you all rescind that action. This should be a time-certain public hearing, and it was on consent, and it shouldn't have been.
Well, Mr. Milstead is not in the audience, but will he be notified of a time-certain meeting since he was notified of this meeting?
I would assume Public Works would do that as they always do.
All right. The chair will entertain a motion at the attorney's request to remove item I from-
Rescind the action.
Consent, rescind the action of approving item I.
Move approval, council's request.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible to remove item I, according to the council.
I'll second it.
We have a proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, to remove item I. All right, it's been removed, and we'll put it back on the agenda for a time-certain. Mr. Manning?
Public hearing, that's it.
Public hearing. You still have the floor, Mr. Manning.
I have nothing further.
You have nothing further? Good deal. Commissioner comments? Oh, I'm sorry, clerk of the court, Mr. Tim Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no items.
Ms. Frank, would you like to have a word? No? I kind of knew that ahead of time, but that's okay. I wanted to make sure. Commissioner comment, starting to my left, Commissioner Pickens.
Yeah, I'd just like to recognize the public library system, and I believe, is it Mrs. Brown?
Yeah.
Correct? Are you here? They had their kickoff to summer reading on June 3rd. And I stopped by the branch in Crescent City for about 20 or 30 minutes and spoke with Joshua Carver and was really pleased with his enthusiasm and the programs that are going to be offered throughout the whole library system through the county. And I just want to commend you for your efforts, and I hope it works out well for you this year.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Lible, to my right.
I'd just like to wish everyone a Fourth of July, a happy Fourth of July and a safe one. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank, just thank everyone for being here and putting up with what we're having to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say this. It's a pleasure to serve with such fine-upstanding gentlemen here in this room and ladies that we have staff and all. We've worked tirelessly on some heavy issues that haven't been had to be addressed before. And it's uncomfortable for a lot of us. Healthy debate is good, and I appreciate our commissioners for entering into debate to really air these concerns out. You know, we don't get behind the room and talk about issues. We don't, we're not allowed to do that. It wouldn't be ethical for us to do that. We're not about doing that. So the only forum we have is to speak in front of the microphone with the TV going and all that. That's good because that really puts us out there. And we're not adversaries. We're working together for the betterment of the county, and we appreciate it. I do want to take a shout out to all the commissioners who attended the GP presentation that they did. We, I can tell you by sitting between the president and CEO of GP and the plant manager that Putnam County is well thought of in their eyes. And kudos go to the Chamber of Commerce for bringing this project to us. Surely, a deal was made, the best deal we could get at the time. And we took that deal to save jobs and to save and to forward our community into the future. And this commission took some heat on it, but we worked very diligently through this process to make it work. And we thank, I want to thank everyone for doing that. If there's no other further business to come before the board, this meeting will be adjourned.